Welcome to the New Brunswick Board of Education meeting. Again, by reading the opening announcement. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on May 6, 2022 to the Home News Tribune and May 7, 2022 to the Star Ledger and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall 78 by Iron Street, New Brunswick. Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Dornau. Mrs. Medina Hernandez. Mr. Ortiz. Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Solis.
Here.
Mr. Spencer. Mrs. Morella. Ms. Sevilla.
Here.
Dr. Caldwell.
Here.
We have a call.
If you'd rise for the flag salute. Dr. Johnson will lead the flag salute. Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is one nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reminder, the next regular monthly Board of Education meeting will be held on February 28, 2023, beginning at 7:00 PM, right here at the New Brunswick High School in the auditorium. We have a school board recognition presentation. Who's going to take that?
That's me.
All right.
Well, as many of you know, January is school board's recognition month, and we would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge our Board of Education members for their commitment to the students in New Brunswick. I would like to just read a proclamation from Governor Phil Murphy. His proclamation, whereas New Jersey public schools serve nearly 1.4 million children in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, and whereas approximately 5,000 local Board of Education members and charter school trustees devote countless hours without remuneration to oversight of the school district's operation, including finance, policy, curriculum, and staffing. And whereas the policymaking bodies for the local school districts, New Jersey's local School Board of Education endeavors to meet the challenges facing public schools and to help students attain the education necessary to excel in college and in the workplace and to enable them to compete in a global economy. And whereas local boards of education have contributed to New Jersey being among the leading states in measures of academic quality such as National Assessment of Education Parquet Scores and the preparation for college through advanced placement courses and other curricular offerings. And whereas the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2023 to be school board's recognition month. And whereas by making meaningful contributions to public education, the dedicated members of local school boards have greatly enhanced the quality of life in our state. Now therefore, I, Philip D. Murphy, Governor of the State of New Jersey, do hereby proclaim January 2023 as school board recognition month. I just have a few statements. You know, our Board of Education members are extremely instrumental in ensuring that we create a safe and nurturing environment to allow our students to reach their goals through their dedication, through their governance, through their advocacy, to holding district leaders accountable to the work that we must do, to be very collaborative. We believe and we know that you are building the future of education here in New Brunswick. So I just want to tell you that I'm very grateful for the work that you do day in and day out. Your contributions cannot go understated. Your volunteer efforts, and I must stress, your volunteer efforts of the school and school board members have the potential for tremendous benefits to the community as a whole, as well as the lives of the students individually. And, you know, I have to say that because many people don't know the conversations that we have where your importance and your stress on the community, the questions that you're always asking and the follow-up that you always want to know to ensure we here in New Brunswick is doing our best. But I appreciate your relentless efforts. Your spirit drives me, it drives our district leaders, our administrators, your school visits, and your fierce and strong recommendation shows your commitment here. I could look at each and every one of you and give a story about what you're about, but that might take a little time, but it really shows me the importance and how you feel about the community here and the amount of work that we need to continue to do, and there's no time to rest. So I just want to say I truly, truly appreciate that. I want to say that I thank you for deeply caring about our students, our families, our staff, holding us accountable to the community we serve. We are grateful for your collective 129 years of experience on the board, and we're extremely grateful for the service you've provided our students. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, thank you very much. Virginia Hill, if you want to...
Good evening, everyone.
The focus is off on the screen a little. I don't know if you can adjust it from your end. You cannot. Okay, thank you.
Tonight, I will be presenting to you the Fall 2022 Star Strong State Assessments. In this presentation, I will review, I will give you an overview as well as the student participation for each of the content areas assessed, the assessment results aggregated and disaggregated by subgroups, as well as intervention strategies for each of the disciplines assessed. The overview for the Fall 2022 Star Strong Assessment. This assessment was aligned to standards, and it was administered in a short period of time. It was intended to be a quick assessment. What it was not intended to do was replace any of our local district assessments nor replace the Spring 2023 New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. It's also an assessment that was not only standard-based, but it also assessed prior year's academic New Jersey student learning standards. All of the items were considered high-quality items, and the administration for this assessment was to take approximately 45 to 60 minutes per content area. The items were all tech-in-hand or multiple choice, which meant that they were able to be scored immediately so that the results can be shared. This is an example of the ELA assessment. As you can see on here, a student who is currently enrolled in Grade 4 ELA would be taking the Star Strong Fall 22 ELA 4 assessment. But that assessment was based on Grade 3 ELA content, so the Grade 3 ELA New Jersey Student Learning Standards. And this was the same, it was applicable to math and science as well. In reporting our results, there are three levels that are used to report proficiency. There's Level 1, which signifies strong support needed, Level 2, some support needed, and Level 3, less support needed. We are required to report student participation in addition to proficiency. So these three tables show you the total number of students who participated in the English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science Star Strong Assessment. Here we see a total of 4,662 students who took the English Language Arts Star Strong Assessment, 5,202 students who took the Mathematics Star Strong Assessment, and 1,876 students who took Science. In English Language Arts, the grade levels that received the assessment was 4th to 10th grade, and in Mathematics was Grade 4 to Grade 8, as well as Algebra 1, Geometry, and Algebra 2 for 9th and 10th graders. And in Science, the three grade levels assessed were 6th grade, 9th grade, and 12th grade. Here you will see now the English Language Arts results. Star Strong English Language Arts results show the overall students in the lower grades, 4th grade, require more support than students in the upper grades when you look at grades 8th to 10th grade. We also have the data broken up by subgroups. As you can see, the district, our Latino population, our Black population, white, economically disadvantaged students with disability, as well as our English language learners. This data shows overall that students with disabilities and our English language learners require greater support than students overall in English Language Arts. In Mathematics, we see the results show that the greatest percentage of students require more support. However, students in Grade 8 in Algebra 2 require less support than all the other tested grade levels and tested courses. When it comes to the subgroup population, we're seeing similar data to what was just shared for ELA. Both of our subgroups, students with disabilities as well as our English language learners require greater support than students overall in Mathematics. Our Science results across Grades 6, 9, and 12, approximately 73% of students require more support while approximately 20% of students require some support. And in reference to the subgroups, we're seeing a similar pattern. Students with disability, our English language learners, but also our Black students require greater support than students overall in Science. So now, based on this data, we look at our instructional programs. What are some instructional programs that we're bringing into the district to provide support in these areas? So we have implemented an instructional period called "What I Need" is our One Instructional Period, which provides Tier 3 instruction, as well as taking into consideration our social-emotional learning needs of our students. These are just a list of some of the programs that are pretty new to our district and are going to provide us support in the content areas of Mathematics, ELA, and Science. So the first one I just mentioned is our Tier 3 instruction called "The Wind Period", which we just started implementing Marking Period 2, and we will continue Marking Period 3. We also have started using, from last year, Wilson Foundations. We started last year in Grades K and 1, and this year we've extended it to 2nd grade. We have now, this year, provided additional guided reading periods in our schedules for the elementary grades, Grades K to 5. And for Mathematics, we have Number Talks, First in Math, which focus on fluency, building fluency for students in Mathematics, as well as ST Math, supporting ongoing academic responsibly, which is one of our intervention math programs that builds on conceptual understanding as well as a balance on procedural fluency. We have a total of 26 basic skills teachers providing BSI in ELA as well as in Mathematics, Extended School Day, as well as virtual tutoring, we're providing in most of our elementary and middle schools in the areas of ELA, Mathematics, and this year we added Science in some of our schools. And then, in addition to these programs, schools that have a high population of English learners or students with disabilities, we are providing an additional extended program for ESL, providing ESL services or CEIS. We also have our WISE program, the Wellness Intervention and Student Empowerment at the high school, assisting our students with their mental health needs. And then for our staff and professional development needs, we've been implementing content-focused coaching cycles in ELA, Mathematics, and Science. Then we have strategies that we're focusing on in each of the disciplines. For English Language Arts, we are focusing with our curriculum in close and careful reading, making sure that we're reading complex texts, and that we're very careful with the lens that we're reading when we're reading a complex text, thinking about how we're assessing students' understanding for comprehension, interpretation, as well as how they're interpreting the author's craft. A lot of the work we're doing is also with a focus on reasoning, how are students able to explain their thinking, share their thoughts, and be able to build on each other's responses. In Mathematics, there's a focus on being able to provide multiple representations to make connections on students' thinking. We also have Number Talks as well as other math fluency strategies that we implement within our curriculum to get students to begin thinking and building understanding as they solidify conceptual-based concepts in Mathematics. And in Science, this year we went through a major shift in standards as well as in our curricular resources, and the shift in Science now is to focus on sense-making, very similar shift that Mathematics took place in 2014, 2014. So our focus on Science is making sure we implement the three dimensions in Science, so that comes with the disciplinary core idea, cross-cutting ideas, as well as our practices. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much for that thorough, thorough report. We've got item number four, the December 20th, 2022 Monthly Board Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion? Second? A roll call, Mr. General.
Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Solis.
I have taken.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Morella. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Move on to item number five, the superintendent's report. Dr. Adrian Johnson.
Yes, thank you. For the month of January, we have enrolled 9,652 students. For December, we had four cases of HIV. There were 131 suspensions in December. Our staff attendance was at 92%, and our student attendance was at 89%. Also, for the month of December, there were 58 positive cases for employees and 45 positive cases for students. Just a couple of updates. The Horizon Innovative Learning Labs are officially finished at New Brunswick Middle School, as well as McKinley Community School. There was a ribbon-cutting ceremony that took place here at the middle school this past Friday on January 20th. It was a wonderful event. Once again, we want to extend our thanks to Verizon, Heart of America, and to Arizona State University's J. Orin, Edison Entrepreneurship, and Innovation Institute for their dedication and time to this project. And I just want to say how important it is that we continue to provide these opportunities and segues for our students to be involved in STEAM and STEM, but not just be consumers to have a seat at the table. I must stress the importance that our students did not have access back in 1980 and 1990 when the Internet was the wild, wild west, and nobody knew that it will become what it is today. And if they don't have access, they're not at the table. And when we speak about being at the table, we are talking about being able to create frameworks conceptually for society to follow, to be able to create rules, to determine what needs to be done for society to be able to succeed, in other words, to govern. And as you can see, the Internet turned into many rules and conformed the way we operate. We all know what it feels like when we can't find our phone, or now when the computer goes down, it's a panic, because rules have conformed the way we live. But many of our students were not at the table and were not part of creating those rules. Fast forward to today, which is very important to me, many of us are living now in a time that we don't realize it is another wild, wild west happening out there. We take a look at what's happening in the terminology such as metaverse, blockchain, technology, cryptocurrency. There's no rules yet, but our governments are now starting to make their rules, and are our kids at the table? And I could tell you, most likely, they're not. And here we go again. So we continue to talk about disparity, we continue to talk about the achievement gap, but if we don't get our kids at the table, we will be talking about this for a very, very long time. So I'm very happy here that in New Brunswick, we have created these labs that could continue to stimulate innovative minds that hopefully would provide them opportunities to continue their learning, learning, intersecondary education, and find themselves at the table to make rules that support their community, that supports their environment, and also that supports their race. So I'm very happy with this. We do have a lot of work to do curricular-wise. We have the rooms, we have the tools, now we need to make sure we fill it with the appropriate curriculum. Also, on Saturday, January 14th, through our continued partnership with the New Jersey Black Women Physician Association and Middlesex County Health Department, we hosted another Vaccine and Flu Clinic at Red Shaw School. First, excuse me, first dose, second dose, and boosters were available to students and parents and staff. Flu vaccines and lead screenings were also available. In total, we administered 39 COVID vaccines and 40 flu vaccines and eight lead screenings that were done. Again, we thank our community partners, testing labs, and pharmacies who partnered with the district to make testing and vaccination available to our staff and families. Our next COVID vaccine clinic is scheduled for Saturday, February 11th. Also, there will be three in-person job fairs, beginning Thursday, February 23rd, March 16th, and May 4th, for all district positions. We're trying our best to get ahead of that, so please visit any one of our social media platforms, Twitter, Facebook, or our district website for more information. Before I close, I do want to talk about an event that just recently transpired that I just feel needs to be addressed, very bothering some. Last week, by filing some false documents, an adult female, quoted as a student, was able to be enrolled in our high school. She attended school for four days. I can't tell you, you know, was she here for the entire, you know, throughout the schedule, she was in a few classes, and then most of the time in our guidance suite as we was trying to get more information from her. So she was here for four days before being found out and barred from entering the district property. All appropriate authorities were immediately notified, and the individual in question has now been arrested for providing false documentation. Certainly, we have cautioned all our students, particularly those whom we have encountered with this person while she was in our high school, and we have also made sure that we have told our students to refrain from having any further contact with her, either remotely or in person. We do applaud our staff members who uncovered this woman's roots, enabling us to address the situation promptly. Understand that when we do enroll students through code, you know, we must enroll all students that come our way, we're going to take a look at our process as well in terms of how to better look for fake documentation and other things. So this is an unfortunate event. Communication had been provided to the parents of individuals that the young lady may have come in contact with, and communication was also provided to all the high school parents today. But other than that, it's currently a police investigation, and that concludes my remarks.
Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's report? Through a second? Roll call, Mr. General.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Morella. Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on to item number six, the student representative report. David Aronoff.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to start off by congratulating Josh Sensario for placing second in the county for shot put with a personal best throw of 50 feet, 2 inches. Levni Gujon, Zedekaya Pollard, and Emily Hernandez. All members of the girls' wrestling team all placed in top four for their respective weight classes in the GMC tournament. The boys' wrestling team will wrestle in their county tournament this weekend. Winter conferences were held in the month of January. Hundreds of parents attended in person or virtually to discuss their students' progress as we approached the halfway point to the school year. Yesterday, New Brunswick High School initiated their Spirit Week with Barbeque at Versus Tucamande. A different theme day is scheduled for the rest of the week, leading to our first-ever winter pep rally this Friday, organized by the Student Council and our advisor, Joseph Chuba. New Brunswick High School is a school filled with talent and opportunities. The Student Council understands that school spirit is an essential part of the high school experience. It brings us together as a community, helps us feel connected to our school, and encourages us to take pride in our school's achievements. New Brunswick High School is filled with talent and opportunities, and alongside the Student Council, it looks to establish and sustain a positive school culture through various events, such as our pep rallies, school dances, and Spirit Weeks. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much for that thorough report. Moving on to item number seven, Mr. Edward Spencer, Facility Committee Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Facility Committee met on January 11th. We discussed the status of the high school gymnasium addition, which is currently out of alphabet. We had the pre-bid walkthrough with bidders. On January 6th, the bids are due on February 8th. We discussed and approved and proposed to paint deeper wrestling on the wall in the auxiliary gym in the high school. Our Director of Social School Security, John Solis, gave us an overview of his office and discussed security enhancement projects and staffing. The New Blanquita B Volunteed Community School, the final education approval was received from the Department of Education on August 18, 2021. Treatment works approval, August 11, 2021. Water main extension permit approval, August 20, 2021. Storm water management plan review, conditional approval, August 20, 2021. Delaware Raritan Canal Commission approval, September 15, 2021. Full site soil erosion and sediment control plan approval was September 20, 2021. All pre-construction remedial actions have been completed. The underground tanks have been removed, the holes have been properly filled, and the job trailers have been delivered to the site. Temporary electrical utilities have been connected. Site demolition, clearing, and excavation of both detention basins have been completed. Grading and building padwork is... work is complete. The final piece of steel was placed on Ja- July twenty-first. Atlantic engineering is continuing to provide quality controls. Testing and inspection serves for brick and mortar work. They are eighty percent complete on steel and welding inspections related to the installation of the metal stairs and handrails. Approximately, approximately thirty-five percent of the temporary window opening protection has been removed and replaced with permanent windows. Approximately, approximately ninety percent of the interior wall framing is completed, and gypsum wall board is now being installed throughout the building. Electrical and plumbing work is progressing on schedule. Temporary heating is scheduled to start by the end of this month. This will allow painting and hydrostatic testing of water piping to begin. We have paid twenty-six point two million dollars to date, and additional two point one million has been invoiced for a total of twenty-eight point three million dollars. We remain on schedule for completion date of August of two thousand twenty-three. That concludes my report.
Mr. Spencer? Moving on to Athletic Committee Report.
Good evening, everyone. The Athletic Committee met earlier this evening. The winter season is more than halfway over and many sports are completing their county tournaments or about to begin them. For boys' track, Joshua Nocero placed second in the shot put with a throw of fifty feet two inches. Libnie Gajen, Zakiya Pollard, and Emily Hernandez both, all from the girls' wrestling team placed in the top four of their respective weight classes. Three placed in the top four for the GMC Country Championship. For, for middle school wrestling, we have four athletes placed in the top five of their respective weight classes. Oscar Ramirez, David Lopez, John Rosas, and Damian Encalada. Martin Luther King Boys Basketball Showcase was a great success with ten teams in attendance. Over five hundred visitors came to watch the events with five basketball games going on throughout the day. Senior Day for Boys Basketball will be on February fourteenth, and for Wrestling, it will be on February tenth. Please come out and show your support to our senior class of two thousand twenty-three. Spring signups have begun for both the middle school as well as the high school. Baseball, softball, boys and girls track and field, boys volleyball, boys tennis at both middle and high school levels. There is also boys and girls golf at the high school level as well. The spring season will begin on March sixteenth. This concludes my report.
Thank you for the report. I guess we have to, uh, vote on the athletic financial reports. Is there a motion to accept the financial report?
Some.
Second.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Jenner.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Morella.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Excellent. Moving on to item number nine, the Curriculum Policy Committee Report. Ms. Deborah L. Seawood.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum and Policy Committee met on January eighteenth last week. Uh, in addition to the presentation by Ms. Hill, we also received, discussed copies of newsletters that have been generated, uh, for the last marking period ongoing. And, uh, there were a list of tips for discussing Martin Luther King and different items to provide additional support to teachers. Some other updates we discussed. Superintendent Hessehale voluntary roundtable meetings with, uh, various staff to, um, hear their challenges, successes, and recommendations. Then, those findings were broken down into different groups according to, uh, curriculum, athletics, whatever the department is. And then those people, those departments followed up with staff to meet with them individually. And I think that was, uh, very effective, and it just indicates to the staff our commitment to providing as much support as is needed. Educators all over the country are really having a hard time for the last couple of years. And we want to commend our administration for developing this process to provide more support to our staff. We reviewed all resolutions, and they are included on the consent agenda for your review, and we recommend approval. The policies and regulations of, oh, God, P S sixteen forty-eight, one eleven, the road forward COVID nineteen, that requirement is no longer required by the New Jersey Department of Education, so we recommend that it's abolished. Also, P one six four eight dot thirteen, school employee vaccination requirement. On August fifteenth, the, uh, governor issued an executive order, number three oh two, which rescinded the requirement of Executive Order two fifty-three that required schools to adopt a policy that required all covered workers to either provide adequate proof to the school district of vaccination status, or students to submit, or submit to weekly COVID nineteen testing. These two policies are being abolished. Then we received and reviewed a list of policies that are being revised and amended to include P O one fifty-two, board officers. Uh, it revises, is being revised to provide a board, two options for electing board officers, and with the majority vote of the members of the board present, and the other with the majority vote of all members of the board. Another policy that's being revised, P O one sixty-one, call adjournment and, uh-uh, cancellation. And P O one sixty-two, notice of board meeting. It's revised to better align with the current governing statute. The next policy we reviewed, P two four one seven, student intervention and referral services. This is being revised because the state code now requires a school district choose the appropriate multidisciplinary team approach, such as the response to intervention or a multi-tier system of support model for planning and delivering services required under the administrative code. In addition, child study team members and other specialists may now participate on intervention and referral service teams. That makes sense. The next policy, R two four sixty dash thirty, additional compensatory special education and related services. This is a new policy. A new statute now applies to students with disabilities who exceed or will exceed the current age of eligibility for special education and related services, twenty-one years old. This policy, New, New Jersey Administrative Code eighteen A forty-six through six point three requires Board of Education to offer up to one year of additional or compensatory special education and related services, including transition services to students with disabilities. If a determination is made by the students' individualized education program team and the students' parent that the student requires additional or compensatory special education services. P fifty-five twelve. Notice.
Just get the title.
Okay. This reduces to align with updates to the law and to align with the new two thousand twenty-two New Jersey DOE model policy. The student services, student records revised, uh, revisions to the administrative code sections require revision in the policy and regulation guide. Revisions include charges in, citation in language, and alignment with the appropriate administrative codes. And the last policy. Board. Oh, bomb threats. Location procedures, and active shooter. So actually, it's three policies. And this is the end. That's clear. All of these were revised to indicate that the bomb threat lockdown and active shooter procedures will be included in the school district's plans, procedures, and mechanisms for school safety and security. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much for the thorough report. Moving on to item number ten, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. Um, just really one item to report that, um, I had mentioned last time that, uh, the superintendent of, of over three decades is going to retire at the end of, of the year, Mark Finkelstein. And, um, he had named Nadia Romano as the deputy currently. Um, and so she just started in January, and so she was former personnel, um, director, did a wonderful job. And so, you know, we're wishing her well in this new, uh, this new role. So, um, also, Mark McCormick, um, is now, um, an advisory member, oh, he's the president of Middlesex College, advisory member of the E S C and J Board. We now have thirty-two members of the board. So, um, with that, we'll move to item number eleven, the public comment. For those that have signed up in advance, Rich?
I'll roll to the microphone, Betty Genoa.
Betty Genoa.
I hope I pronounced your last name correctly.
Hope we said that correctly.
Good evening to all.
Good evening.
My name is Betty Hanau. I'm a former employee of New Brunswick Public Schools. The last day I worked for the New Brunswick Public School System was on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty. God led me to resign from my position as a secretary even though I didn't really understand why. However, I did as I was instructed because I wanted to be obedient. During that time, as you may recall, we were at the peak of a pandemic crisis, and our children were receiving virtual learning at home. I was able to see more of what was being taught to our children. For example, I was able to see when my daughter's kindergarten teacher read a book to the class stating that some families had two mothers and some had two fathers. In another occasion, I was able to see a video that was presented to my sons in their sixth grade class, English Language Arts. It showed several images of men-to-men relationships, including kissing scenes, and men getting married with one another, and so on. Still to this day, I really do not understand what the educational purpose of that paper was. All I know is that I was never asked for permission, nor was I notified that my children would be receiving these types of teachings. They were done in a very discreet and deceitful manner. But for all that is secret will eventually be brought into the open, and everything that is concealed will be brought to light and made known to all, as it is said in Luke eight seventeen. Since then, I have removed my children from the public school system, but I feel a burden for the ones that are still being exposed to these teachings. We really need to work on being people of integrity and instill these values to the children as they are the future. God asks us to love one another. God asks us to love one another as He has loved us. Perverting and confusing the innocent minds of children and adolescents is not love. And I want to make it clear that I have adult friends that I love, and they identify themselves as being gay. So I'm not a homophobe, but I am an adult who knows who I am and whose I am. This may not be the case for a first grader or a sixth grader. And unfortunately, not every adult knows who they are. I was there at one point, and I can assure you, I am not the only one here who has been given second and third chances by God. I have been able to course correct, to turn from my wicked ways by His grace. Every day that God grants us is a new opportunity to make a difference for the better. The time is now. Repent and turn from your wicked ways. Do not be deceived. God is not mocked. For whatever amends souls, that He will also be. So I am here tonight to admonish you in regards to the topics that are being addressed to these students, and in the manner, in the manner that it is being done. This is certainly something that needs to be addressed by the parents. And I know you have certain laws, rules that come from the state, but this does not take the responsibility off of your hands to do what needs to be done in your position of authority. Do what is right. For what shall it profit, for what shall it profit a man if he shall gain the whole world and lose his own soul? He who has ears to hear, let him be.
Sorry to interrupt you, but we have a certain time limit. So, but thank you so much for coming out.
You did not interrupt me, sir. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich was next.
Robert Vasquez.
It's Robert Vasquez.
Yeah. Hello, this is Robert Vasquez. I am a student at New Brunswick High School. I just want to talk to you about the current situation at our high school right now. So far, there has been no change in regards of keeping our school safe and, and what's it called, fighting, what's it called, pardon me, fixing the problem with mental health. You know, there's, there's been a lot of fights in our school. They've become aggressively worse right now. I literally saw a kid, I saw a kid, and his nose was gashed. And earlier, like this week, or I believe last week or the week before, there was a school shooting threat. And I want to come to you guys and say, how am I supposed to feel safe in this school when there's so much ruckus going on in the high school? You know, me, me and the, and the rest of the students deserve to feel safe and, and have a learning experience, not experience, fear, violence, and all of that. And I just want to, I just want to come out and say, you know, I think we should really continue our progress on checking our mental health, because I believe that if we don't check in our mental health, we're obviously not going to handle things the way we're great. And as you can see, the students and some people aren't handling the right way. So I think we just need to focus on mental health and, yeah, just, you know, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just out here as a concerned student because I care about each and every one of my classmates, and it hurts to see them, you know, physically, to either be attacked or the one attacking, you know? We are deserved to respect each other and be safe. So we just want to come out here and say, you know, keep, keep on continuing your, your initiatives to mental health. There's some people that are afraid to go out, to talk to a therapist, to talk to a social worker. I personally know someone who's been going through a lot, and it, it takes a lot for them to go out and actually seek help. Some people think that sticking a, some sort of statement on the student card and then call it a day. We need more than that. We need to directly work with the students, be there for the students instead of, you know, having these statements. You know, we have a lot of great programs here. I just think that we need to make sure that we advertise them to the students because some students don't even know that many of these great programs exist. So we definitely need to keep on doing that. So please consider focusing on mental health and making our schools a safer place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Caldwell.
This is Tom. Thank you, Josh. Yes, sir. I just want to make sure he sees me or hears me. First off, I just want to say thank you for coming to the mic. I appreciate your proactive stance. Yes, we need to continue to do more, and I agree with you, there are a lot of great things happening here that we need to advertise. But what's really, really important is that I need you and I want you, and I want all our students here in the high school to feel safe. I'm looking forward to coming to visit the school to talk to you and maybe to other group of students, to hear some of the things that we may not be seeing or missing. We understand that we are dealing with some different times now, but, you know, it's time for us to really be more purposeful. So I truly, truly appreciate that. I truly, truly appreciate you holding myself accountable to the work that we have begun to do, and I'm committed to coming to speak to you and any other group of students that are, you feel is necessary along with Mr. Principal Brunson to see what else we can do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. General, is there anyone else to sign up in advance?
No one else has signed up within the timeframe, Dr. Caldwell.
Okay. We're going to move to item number twelve, President's Report. I just want to build on that, and, and thank you for, for coming to the mic. The, one of the things, it's time for the President's Report. Appreciate you, young man, coming out and, you know, as they say in online security, if you see something, say something. There's a lot going on, there are a lot of students here, and so it's important to tell your teacher, it's important to tell the principal of the school so that we can be proactive in doing some, some things. And so there have been a number of incidents, and unfortunately, the incidents are in every school, every large school. So it is, it is what it is. So we thank you so much for, for being vigilant. Moving on to item number thirteen, the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to accept the Consent Agenda? Second? Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer. Ms. Morella.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes. I'm standing on my seat.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Wonderful. Moving on to number fourteen, the Finance Committee Report. Ms. Diana Solis.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. The Finance Committee, along with all members of the New Brunswick Court of Education, have had an opportunity to review the Finance Committee Report, and I'd like a motion to approve the Finance Report as presented.
Is there a second? Roll, roll call, Mr. General.
Tila.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer. Ms. Morella.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
So item number fifteen, the Resolution for Closed Session.
I'm sorry, Dr. Caldwell, if I may.
Yeah.
Can you just, if I'm out of order, I do apologize, just stop me. I, I would like the, the record to reflect on the, the public comment that referred to the instruction, the curriculum and instruction for our health in, in our, in our schools. As a parent here in the district, as, as many of you know, I am a mother of four, my children are enrolled in the school district as a board member and as a member of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, I think it's important to note that parents do receive notification of the curriculum and instruction that is being presented in the respective health classes. There is notification, there are, there is a sign-off, okay? And I think that it's just important for the record to show that there is a sign-off for the curriculum and instruction in the health ever since it was changed by the state. So we all do have that. And also, not just as a, as a parent of students in the district, as a parent with two out of four children that are identified as LGBTQIA+. I couldn't help but just speak up. And it is important for us, and we here are in the business of education, right? And it's important for us to acknowledge the fact that LGBTQIA+ is not something new, it is something that has always been there, and it is something for us to know, learn about, and accept, okay? We are all human, we are all deserving of acceptance, love, and a well-rounded education. And I think, not just as a parent of students who are consuming this education currently, I am honored that my students are here, that my children are here, and that our district has the opportunity to have educators who are so committed to the, the well-rounded development of all of the students in the district. So for any students that have been pulled from the district simply because of the LGBTQIA curriculum, I find that it is unfortunate, but every parent must do what is, what they feel is correct for their students. However, I couldn't be more honored as a parent and as a member of this community and as a taxpayer to be part of what is happening in, in our district. Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. And again, I'm sorry if I'm uneducated.
No, thank you very much. Very, very well said. We're moving on to the resolution. If you have a concern, you didn't sign up in advance, please reach out to the superintendent, and he will be sure to handle your concern. Item number fifteen, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA ten, code one, four to six, provides that certain matters of the public body may be discussed in closed session, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, personnel matters, matters of attorney-client privilege, now therefore being resolved that the aforementioned subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff in the minutes of said closed session, discussion will be made available to the public when the reason for the non-disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exists. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer. Ms. Morella. Ms. Sevilla. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes. We're in closed session.